Good morning and welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, the second for 2024. We've got all councillors in attendance this morning. So I'll hand over to you councillor Kunsaman if you would like to do the acknowledgement of country this morning.
Thank you Chair. Today this committee recognises the traditional custodians of this land on which we meet. We support their right to democratic representation and social inclusion. Ipswich City Council respectfully recognises the ongoing challenges faced by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. And this committee supports their inclusion and participation in community cultural arts and sports activities.
Thank you councillor Kunsaman. Does any member of committee have any declarations of interest? We'll move on to the first item this morning, which is the confirmation of minutes. And the recommendation in front of us here is that the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee held on the first of February 2024 be confirmed. I'm happy to move that, do I have a second there? Thank you councillor Kunsaman. We'll open that up for any amendments or corrections. There being none, we'll take that to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimous and carried. We're moving into our presentation this morning. And we're very lucky to have some dear friends of the city with us today. So I'd like to introduce Amy Carrington, who is the CEO of the Domestic Violence Action Centre. Thank you and welcome. And we've also got Trudy Peters, who is the Director of the Integrated Services Response, Southern Region Department of Justice and Attorney General. And we'll have some council officers supporting there as well. They're here to present on what will be the second item on the agenda this morning, which is the Ipswich Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Strategy and Action Plan 2024 to 2025. This document is a true reflection of collaboration and commitment to stopping domestic and family violence in our city. And I would like to thank all of the services who have come together and played a part in the development of this plan. From those who attended the Switch Speaks Out event, which was very successful. And it was all the way back in last May now. To those who work in this space on the daily and to the brave survivors as well. As a council, we are committed to working alongside all of you. So the item number two this morning is the report as mentioned. And this report is concerning the Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Strategy 2024-2025. It outlines the collaborative approach that the Ipswich Integrated Services System Working Group will take in responding to and reducing domestic and family violence in our community. Council have supported the Ipswich Integrated Service System Working Group on the development of this localised action plan, which commits to actions towards ending domestic and family violence in Ipswich. The recommendation here is that the report concerning the Ipswich Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Strategy and Action Plan 2024 to 2025 be received and its contents noted. We might invite our special guests, supported by Ms Dower, to the lectern.
Good morning and thank you so much for having us here today. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. My name is Amy Carrington, I'm the CEO of the Domestic Violence Action Centre.
Don't know if I need to pull that down. My name's Trudy Peters, I am the Director of Integrated Service Responses for the Southern Region here in Queensland with the Department of Justice and Attorney General.
We're really proud to be here today to present on behalf of the working party, the draft action plan. And one of the things that's so exciting to be here is the collaboration and the true work together as a whole of a community to come to this point today. So with this plan, sorry, that's on the agenda. Our vision is to inspire hope within our community by framing domestic and family violence as a collective concern. Through shared responsibility and active engagement, we strive to build a safer society in visioning a future that's liberated from the scourge of domestic and family violence. You may have read recently that Commissioner Katerina Carroll had reported a 25% increase last year alone in domestic violence matters. This strategy though, serves as a beacon of hope. It leads Ipswich's response to domestic and family violence. It's about embracing community-led solutions. And the plan invites active participation, ensuring that voices are not only heard but elevated. Beyond our community, this initiative stands as a potential template, offering guidance to other communities.
Thanks Amy. Our role as a working group is going to be to monitor the progress of the Ipswich Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Strategy and Action Plan and work together to achieve that strategy. It's been really important for us to bring together so many different non-government agencies and government agencies from across Ipswich, to really work together to develop this plan and to talk together about what we all need to do in our own spaces. When we talk about integration, we really mean everybody, every agency, every organisation playing their part when it comes to addressing and responding to domestic and family violence. But more importantly for us, preventing it. If we can prevent this from happening before it starts, then that's ideally what we want to try and achieve as well with this plan. The collaboration across government, non-for-profit services, community groups and victim survivors instills hope in both the sector and the community. We acknowledge the multitude of services that have contributed over the years and recognizing this is an ongoing journey, this has been going on for some time, for a really long time in Ipswich, with so many different really committed individuals and organisations trying to really solve this complex problem that we have. The working group in Ipswich will play a pivotal role in terms of monitoring, circling back to the community for consultation, making sure that the actions that we are implementing are effective and useful for community and really symbolising the commitment to a lasting and inclusive process for everybody.
And lastly, we'd just like to thank council for your support with the summit last year and again, the commitment to hold another summit in 2024. And we'd like to thank you for your support and your leadership as a council to help us to work together to address domestic and family violence.
Thank you so much. Did any member of committee wish to make comment while we've got our, well we've got our special guests here at the lectern? Or ask any questions?
Thank you Chair, I would just like to take the opportunity with the ladies up here, both Trudy and Amy. Your leadership and your advocacy from such strong, intelligent women is just critical to the success. And I mean all of the work you do each and every day, the challenges that we face as a community. And you never give up, you're striving for improvements every day. And that hard, tough advocacy for budget, getting the resources we need. Both councillor Kunsam and I have had the benefit of attending several of the integrated working group meetings. And to the men and women of the various organisations that attend those meetings and do that really important work. I say thank you again for your commitment and your courage. And what a wonderful outcome from council's piece of work here to, you know, investigate a strategy which it wasn't needed to be a strategy. Council just needed to be a little bit more, I guess, active and partner with the good people that are already in place doing the good work. So I'd like to thank Melissa and the team within council. You've taken on this project with passion and commitment. And what you've achieved for, you know, our community in doing so. You know, after the notice of motion and the work got underway, I was approached by so many women in the community and, you know, shocked and I shouldn't be shocked by some of those women professionals. Intelligent women who were subjected to domestic and family violence, who said they were inspired to reach out and seek help as a result of the advocacy that council is now doing in the space. And equally, the staff involved in the training that we did here in council. That was a pivotal moment for a number of the staff members. So thank you Melissa and staff.
Thanks councillor Kunsaman.
I'd also like to pass on my congratulations to those people who have worked on this. I particularly note that there are a couple of programmes related to perpetrators in this. And it seems to me, and it has always seemed to me, that that is a very important part of your work. And this is where we put the blame where it belongs perhaps. But to look to men, particularly to see that they could change, that they could do better, that they could change attitudes, is a very important part of your work, so congratulations.
If I may Chair, to Amy and Trudy, I just, my heartfelt thanks to the work that you do day in, day out, every day for our community. I know it was particularly challenging during Covid as well, that really ratcheted up. But thank you so much for all the work that you do in our community and the kindness and the support and the practical support that you provide people in our community. And Mel, Ms Dow, thank you very much for the support that your team have been providing. So we can have this collaboration, so we can continue going forward and working together and striving to get better and better.
Yep, thank you very much, yeah.
I believe we're demonstrating here that council has a role in social change as well. Not just those budget type items, but really important social change. And that's, we should be supporting.
Thank you. So do we have a mover for that recommendation? So we can go into, thank you councillor Doyle and seconded by councillor Kunsaman? Now just like to open that up for discussion and yes, thanks for indulging me while we kind of did things a little bit differently. I thought it was important to acknowledge Amy and Trudy while we could make eye contact with them to further highlight the support that council provides them as community leaders on this really important issue for us. I don't believe that there's ever been a council that has, you know, stood behind the domestic and family violence prevention movement as much as ours since 2020. And just having those, having the ability to stand alongside those community leaders and feel empowered, listen to the stories has been a really important part of my journey since 2020. And I think that, you know, the advocacy can sometimes sound like, you know, a poor me, a woe is me, we don't get enough. But I think this movement here, and particularly some of the words I've heard Amy speak over the years, has seen, you know, the promotion of genuine tangible solutions. Rather than just screaming that we have a problem and dog whistling and pointing. No, we have, you know, worked towards, we have made steps towards identifying what solutions to some of these problems are. There are so many working groups, councillor Kunsaman and I sit on the Domestic Family Violence Prevention Network. That was an initiative of the Palashay Government. And the work that they do across the state and across the 77 councils in Queensland is really important too. And to finally have something here in council that we can point at to say, here's what we're going to be doing in collaboration with our community, I think is really, really important. The document that sits in front of us, and we're all very lucky that we actually have a working group outside of the local government who are going to hold us to account, who are going to put up their hand and say, well, you know, we committed to this and we actually need a little bit more help. Whether it's through funding or advocacy, it's a genuine commitment on our behalf. But we get the benefit of not having to have that direct oversight ourselves. You know, when the local government has, you know, responsibilities and they're, you know, you know, already overwhelmed with the work that we need to do to progress our city in a sustainable way. To have these groups attached to us and beside us in, you know, such, you know, a positive way is amazing. And it's the way that we should be doing it. I'm really glad, you know, since the notice of motion that you put forward councillor Doyle, that this is how it's evolved because I think it, something like this has to be tailor-made. We can't pick up what they're doing at the Gold Coast, what they're doing at Logan, what they're doing in Somerset. It absolutely needs to be what we need here in Ipswich. And I think that that's the beauty of this document too. It's very localised, it identifies who all the key players are so that we know where we're going and what we're doing. So again, congratulations on this amazing work. And I wholeheartedly support council adopting this strategy, great work. Any further discussion? Mayor?
If I may Chair. I think it's no surprise that this council that was elected in 2020 is the first time in our city's history that we've had a female-dominated, a female majority council. I think it's no surprise that we have worked together with our community to get a better outcome for women in our community. I think it's a great example of how council works alongside the community and those who are supporting our community to work together and have, like you said, council fact, the tangible outcomes that will make things better for our community. Thank you.
With no further discussion, we'll put that to the vote, all those in favour. That's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number three this morning. The activation of the former Jamie's Kitchen as a visual arts studio. The recommendation here, I might just change slightly. It comes in two parts. So A, that council approve naming the new visual arts studio to the Ipswich Art Workshop. And B, that the report concerning the activation of former Jamie's Kitchen as a visual arts studio be received and its contents noted. I'm happy to move those two, do I have a second there for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. In discussion, and I just want to pick up on something that is in the report, but I think it's quite important for us this morning. Which might kind of alter the way that we, or we might need to alter the recommendations here. So if we're looking at page 35 of the report. And it says if council supports the approach described above, the next steps will be to, and then it outlines some actions. But there's nowhere in the recommendation that suggests that we would support it. So I just wanted to open up to the committee and have a little bit of a discussion around the proposals put in front of us. So this comes directly from the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group, who have set out some recommendations which I think are, you know, easy to follow, they make sense. And they're quite practical about how that space might be activated into the future. And just try and resolve something this morning so that we can get started on that work and move towards something. Because if we don't, we won't really have a pathway forward for the way that we activate that space. So just wanted to seek the committee's thoughts and feelings around, you know, those recommendations on page 35 as to how we proceed.
Should we make it as a recommendation C? Look, isn't it in the body?
Yeah, I'm thinking recommendation C and we'll form something up. And for the benefit of committee, it's basically so that this space becomes artist-led. And we allow the artists to apply for residencies with daytime use and access to the main stage, main space from Monday to Friday. Artists who were selected for residencies can apply for quick response funding to support their artistic development, which I think, yeah, is a great recommendation. Artists would be permitted to host classes and workshops to support them to generate their own income, which is fabulous. And that the weekend and evening classes and workshops programmed by the Ipswich Art Gallery would be designed to align with the art gallery and the community exhibition. So that's saying that we're reserving those weekend spots for the Ipswich Art Gallery to do some complimentary programming there. So yeah, I guess we will have a recommendation C this morning and that that's council approve. The approach. Described on page 35 of the report. For the activation of the new Ipswich Art Workshop. Actually, remove the word new, sorry. Just for consistency, otherwise you'll all be on my back about that in discussion. Any other discussion, any questions or queries about the Jamie space? Councillor Doyle, are you happy to include that recommendation C?
Thanks Chair, you're so agreeing.
Great. We'll open that for discussion, yeah.
If I may Chair, I think it's great to see the transformation of this space as it's almost becoming completed. And the building is in the heart of our cultural offering. That includes the Ipswich Art Gallery, the Ipswich Community Gallery and the Ipswich Civic Centre, all the way down through our cultural spine, the Nucleus Street Precinct and Tormal Place. So providing this space as the Ipswich Art Workshop recognises the importance of culture and creativity and its value to our economy and our vibrancy. Our creative community have told us that this is what they want. And this is another example of this council ensuring that our local artists are supported and demonstrated. And that we demonstrate our commitment by building this, this, this community. I thank the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group for their very practical support of this. And I note their excitement of this particular initiative as well. And I'd just like to thank in council, councillor Mr, who does a lot of work, works very hard with the community there and is very well regarded by the, our arts community. And I think also does a great job for our community as well.
I agree, Mayor, that, yeah, we do have some wonderful advocates in that space. Really excited that this could be, you know, a great example of a local government making a decision and following through with it and getting an outcome quite quickly. I mean, if we think of the turnaround on this workshop space since November and the work that's been able to get done, including the Christmas period in there, it's pretty amazing and I'm really glad that we managed to make a move this quickly in response to the cries from the arts community for many, many, many years that they would like some more workshop space, some more places to collaborate. And the fact that we've got the Ipswich Art Advisory Group helping us identify the opportunities of a space like this is great as well. Again, it's another instance of us even, you know, just this morning, where we're going out to community to ask them what they want. I think that this is really powerful and meaningful community engagement and it's how it should be done, you know, going to the people who are going to use those spaces, who are going to lift up, you know, the entire arts community and, you know, seize the opportunity of a brand new workshop space nestled in between the community gallery and the Ipswich Art Gallery. I don't think you get any more synergistic than that. So, a really fabulous and wonderful response from the organisation for turning this notice of motion around in such a short period of time. Yeah, we can't thank you enough for that. And I know that the Ipswich Arts Community are going to, you know, hold on to this with two hands and be so proud and produce some really great work. We're already hearing their wonderful ideas. They're already asking us about when they can activate the space. So, I'm really pleased that we've included recommendation C this morning so that we can keep that forward movement going. We'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Item number four this morning is the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council 2024. This report is concerning the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council, or as IAC, as we called it back in the day and we still call it, and its 2024 programme. The recommendation here is that the report concerning the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council 2024 be received and its contents noted. Happy to move that. Would anyone like to second that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer about the IAC programme for 2024? We'll go straight into discussion. I just want to say that it's great that we have thirty seven applicants, again, thirty seven engaged young people within the sphere of local government, I think is really important. Offering those leadership pathways is something that's, young people sometimes don't get the opportunity to do. And I note in the report, you went to great lengths to promote this programme. We see it on social media. You also did that targeted engagement with the schools to see if there are young people who are pretty keen to get involved too. And I think that that's really important. I think that's a really basic way to try and, you know, extract some of those positive thinking young people who want more opportunities within the city. And to be operating in the context of the local government, it's changed quite significantly since I was a member, you know, back in 2010. And I think that it's even better than it used to be. And last year's programme was really positive because we managed to include young people in the decision making of council. You know, it's its own community reference group, you know, with a little bit of, you know, heightened responsibility as young people leading the way, as voices that we actually turn to when we're making decisions. And I like that we've kept that and that's the vision for 2024 as well. We've still got a lot of work to do as a local government and including young voices is probably one of the most important things that we can do in any of our decision making. Because a lot of the decisions that we make can, you know, impact on what the world would look like, what our city will look like, you know, in twenty years. So, it's not for us necessarily to enjoy, but young people. And I think that embedding that in council is really important. So, the Ipswich Youth Advisory Programme is really great. And to have council officers so keen and enthusiastic to engage with them, no matter where they are across the organisation, you know, it is, it plays into the success of the programme as well. Without any further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. We're whipping through all of the good stuff this morning. And not least is those amazing community projects and events that we funded. Item number five this morning is the Community Funding and Support allocations report. And the recommendation here is that the report concerning the allocation of council's community funding and support programmes from one October to thirty one December twenty three be received and its contents noted. I'll happily move that. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer? I'll open that up for discussion. Mayor, I think you had your green light on.
If I may, Chair, if you look up how much money has been returned back to our community groups and sporting groups this term, it's been about seven and a half million dollars has gone back to our community. And it's been great to see the approach we had. We established a grants office when this council started. We've run, I think, about twenty grant writing workshops. We've got another fall plan for this year as well as the masterclass. It's great to see our community tap into that. I'd like to tap into one of these, the one here about the Civic and Ceremonial Events Fund, which is five applications for Anzac Day services and marches. And I just want to, you know, just highlight the fact that the council's doing this because of traffic management regulations changed in 2018. And therefore, council officers and SES can't do the traffic management. So, we now support RSL sub branches as well as Anzac Day Observance Committees to do that traffic management. And can I just say, last year, there were twenty three Anzac Day services on Anzac Day, not including the many that the schools do. And on that, on Anzac Day, there was also eight marches in total, including the large one in our CBD. And I've got to say, my philosophy has always been that this is always veteran led, that these events shouldn't be council dictating how these services, these marches should be done. And it's really clear from the RSL sub branches as well as the Anzac Day Observance Committees is that the serving members and veterans are very supportive of the services, very grateful for the input from the community. But once the final march is done, after doing twenty three services, eight marches, they wish to then disperse. They've probably been up since about two o'clock in the morning, take the weapons back to the armoury. The older veterans, you know, who are seeing the jeep or managing to do the march, will go to go off to other the RSL clubs, a bit of two up. Or many of them, like my husband, will go into Brisbane for his own association day where they have celebrations once a year of coming together. So, it's really important that when that march is completed, that that is the end of the, I guess, the formal process. And I really like the fact this council has been led by the veterans and the serving community to see how they would like that and I would hope that would continue.
Yeah, I think it is important to acknowledge, you know, how much money we do invest in those Anzac services across the city. And there's no sign of that slowing down. There are very, very motivated people in those groups who wish to continue the great work for many years to come.
And I think, councillor, if I could make the suggestion, some years ago, council mandated for serving defence members and veterans to form up after the march down at the Timothy Maloney Park or over at the North East Reserve. It was a huge offence. Everyone's been working very hard all day, been up since two or three in the morning, to stand there at attention or even at ease for another hour or two while politicians paddled on was something that was, that just really rankled the veterans and the serving community. So, I like the fact that we have gone back to what the veterans and serving members would like to do.
Yeah, lovely. And more broadly, I guess, on the funding front, it's great to see, you know, a wonderful diversity in those projects. Again, you know, it's, the new funding guidelines have settled in with the community quite well. No thanks to the, you know, tireless work of the Stronger Communities Programme, which has taught a hell of a lot more people to apply for grants, which means that it's becoming even more competitive. So, we actually get to choose, you know, those really high performing projects and events that we wish to invest in. And I think that's a really positive place for us to be. You know, I wish we had all of the money in the world to fund all these important projects and events, but to see that we have such a diversity in this group, you know, it feels certainly more equitable. It's not just squeaky wheels, you know, who are asking for money. People are genuinely investing in going through the process, learning how to write a grant and learning how to access money. So, I think that that's been a really huge governance improvement that can seem a little bit scary and spooky to the community when you're asking them to do all of this extra work. But as evidenced by the amount of money that we've given out over the last four years, they're more than up for the challenge, you know, to meet those bare minimum requirements so that we can all put our hand on our heart and say, we invested in this really important thing and it meant something for the benefit of our entire community.
Thank you, I agree with both of your comments, but just want to add that, I guess, the grant writing workshops and the grants team, you know, the success in the community implying for these, applying for the grants, it's underpinned also by the helpful staff in the department, councillor Fekner. And you and I hear from several members in our community who apply for these grants. And yes, it can be a little overwhelming and a quick call to the department and council here and they are assisted and step through the process, so.
We do have Ms Sarah Shee in the audience today and, yeah, we do. Thank you for your work. It's that time of the year again, it's the quarter where we have the allocation report. So, and again, you know, since the last one, it's those phone calls that say, you know, there were people on the other end of the phone guiding, you know, how I do this, how I put my application together. It means a lot. So, yeah, on top of the capacity building workshops, we've also just got a wonderful ER, you know, at the other end of the line to help people navigate that.
And if I could say, in doing so in good governance as well, the team that provides the advice is not the team that's assessing. So, they do, you know, ensure that good governance is also occurring as well.
It is, yep. With no further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Lastly, on the agenda this morning is the Ipswich Libraries Report Card 2023. Does any member of committee wish to speak to the officer? No, the recommendation here is that the report concerning Ipswich Libraries Report Card twenty three be received and its contents noted. Happy to move. Do we have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. No better person, I think. Been a wonderful supporter of the libraries over the years. I'll open this up for any discussion in the first instance.
If I may, Chair, thank you. A very impressive report. And I think it makes, I think our libraries have to be amongst the best in the state. We see the statistics here, we continue to go from strength to strength. Every single library saw an increase in visitors with the Ipswich Children's Library seeing a whopping eighty five percent increase in visitors over the last year. We thought it was huge before, but to see two hundred and thirty thousand visitors in 2023 is, you know, nothing short of spectacular. The libraries offer more than fifty programmes and our libraries continue to adapt to the changing community expectations. And especially as our city grows and doubles in population, our needs will change and evolve. So, I think it's great to have an organisation that can meet that need and tap into funding. We do get significant funding from the state as well. So, it's really great that we're able to collaborate with them and get really great service. And I also see that the libraries also support about a hundred and fifty housebound residents with receiving monthly deliveries, connecting seniors, it's all sensitive story time, providing accessible activities as well. So, it's really great to see that, you know, people across the spectrum are being served and looked after by libraries.
Must be noted that the drastic increase at the Red Bank Plains Library is probably because of the advocacy of both councillor Ireland and councillor Madsen in really lobbying for those upgrades there. The community is loving it. Yeah, I speak to so many young mums who go library hopping now because there, there's programming out at Plains, there's programming out at Rosewood, there's programming here in the city and of course, the Jewel, which is the, you know, Australia's first standalone children's library is, is pretty special. And to see the numbers increase as they are across the board is extremely heartening and proof that if you build it, if you invest in it, you know, the community will, you know, certainly pay you back in appreciation. It was only a few months ago that we had the results from the annual survey handed back to us and we're still in the nineties for satisfaction. And I guess as the numbers continue to grow, we get to expose more of our residents to the wonderful offerings in our library. Yeah, I'd like to see more visitors out into the Rosewood Library. So, you know, that, that could be a particular focus over the next twelve months to try and really, you know, bed that in the community and highlight it as somewhere, you know, where the community can use. And I think it's extremely accessible. I mean, you know, it's a short train trip, you know, if you're on the train line there to get out to Rosewood as well. But so, so happy to see that the community are using these wonderful assets that do cost us a lot of money, but money well spent when you're inspiring the next generation of young readers.
And Chair, Chairmate.
Yeah, of course.
Councillor Madsen and I are very pleased with the increase down there that council gave the library back to the community. We see a lot of young mums going in there now. So, seeing that the hubs have closed down a little bit and they're not in the schools as much, we're, we're very pleased that the library's functioning well. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Chair, if I may say, I note also a page in there on managing unacceptable behaviour, which, you know, you only need a handful of people to ruin it for everyone. So, pleased to see the organisation is providing support to our staff for those occasions when that does happen and with the external stakeholders there involved to make sure that our, our teams are safe and our residents are safe as well.
Yeah, it was a discussion at committee last year when we were looking at the satisfaction report and how that, you know, those unacceptable behaviours kind of had a little bit of an impact on the satisfaction of some people's experience in the library. You know, it's difficult to deal with and, you know, I believe I had a conversation with the CEO regarding, you know, other local government areas and similar problems that they're having and the need for security more and more is increasing, you know, and that, with that comes a cost. So, to see the proactive training of staff to, you know, work on de-escalating those things in-house is, you know, really great as well. With no further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. And brings us to the end of the committee today. And I just want to personally thank my very capable and amazing deputy chair as your last Community Culture, Arts and Sports Committee. You will be missed, but you've done a fabulous job advocating for the really important things in our community.
Thank you, Chair.
And with that said, the meeting will conclude at eighteen minutes past eleven and at twenty eight minutes past eleven, we'll have our next meeting.
It's, it's eleven twenty eight.
Yep, sounds good. Eleven twenty eight.